Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call tonight's Temecula City Council meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Welcome. It's nice to see everyone here this evening. Tonight's invocation, we're gonna invite up Sylvester Scott, welcome this evening, and then, flag salute, we're going to have the Boy Scouts of America Troop 148 come up and do our flag salute. So, join us.
Oh thou merciful God, oh thou who art mighty and powerful, oh thou most kind Father, these servants have gathered together turning to thee, supplicating thy threshold, desiring thine endless bounties from thy great assurance. They have no purpose save thy good pleasure; they have no intention save service to the world of humanity. Oh God, make this assemblage radiant, make the hearts merciful, confer the bounties of the Holy Spirit, endow them with the power from heaven, bless them with heavenly minds, increase their sincerity so that with all humility and contrition they may turn to thy kingdom and be occupied with service to the world of humanity. May each and one, each one become a radiant candle, may each one become a brilliant star, may each one become beautiful in color and redolent of fragrance in the kingdom of God. O kind Father, confer thy blessings, consider not our shortcomings, shelter us under thy protection, remember not our sins, heal us with thy mercy. We are weak, thou art mighty; we are poor, thou art rich; we are sick, thou art the physician; we are needy, thou art most generous. Oh God, endow us with thy providence. Thou art the powerful, thou art the giver, thou art the beneficent.
Everyone, please rise. If in uniform, salute the flag. If not, put your right hand over your heart. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, may we please have the roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Alexander?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Calvis?
Here.
Mayor Schwank?
I'm here.
Mayor Potem Stewart?
Here.
Thank you very much. We'll move into presentations. Our first presentation this evening is by David Preciado of Hyde Bailey regarding our city's annual comprehensive financial report. Welcome.
Thank you. Alright, so, good evening. So, my name is David Preciado. You might have had David Showalter on the docket there at some point, but I'm here on his behalf. He was in an accident, couldn't be here. However, I was the audit manager overseeing the financial statement audit. So, our responsibility as the auditor was to express an opinion as to whether or not the financial statements were presented fairly. Part of our audit included the consideration of the city's internal controls for the purpose of determining our audit procedures and not to provide assurance concerning those internal controls. In the audit process, we gather evidence from inquiries with staff, verification with third parties, vouching transactions to supporting documentation, and performing analytical procedures. So, based on the evidence that was gathered during the audit, we issued a unmodified opinion over the financial statements, and this is a clean opinion and is the highest level of assurance that we can provide. So, the auditor's report also contains a emphasis of matter paragraph. So, this paragraph draws the reader's attention to the implementation of a new accounting standard. So, this standard is related to leases. So, the impact of the standard on the city's financial statements is included as a footnote disclosure, so that's footnote number eighteen. Our opinion within the auditor's report is not affected with regards to this matter, so we still have a clean, unmodified opinion. So, moving on here, there's certain balances within the financial statements that are derived from estimates. So, those balances are related to the city's pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities, and are both based upon valuations from actuaries. So, these balances are sensitive based upon the inputs that the actuaries are using. So, for example, the discount rate, if it moves up or down 1%, it could have a huge difference on the net pension liability or OPEB liability. So, that relationship has been disclosed as a separate footnote. So, that's footnote number nine for the city's pension, and footnote number fourteen for other post-employment benefit liabilities. So, moving on here, there were no corrected or uncorrected misstatements identified during our audit, and there were no disagreements with management during the course of the audit. All city staff were extremely professional during the entire audit. They were super helpful and were a huge part in the success of the audit. To conclude, on behalf of Hyde Bailey, I'd just like to thank you all for allowing us to serve as your auditor, and we look forward to serving in the future. And that concludes my remarks.
Okay.
I always get so nervous up here.
Well, you could, everyone behind you was thoroughly enthralled with the footnotes and drawing the reader in.
If you guys wanna be auditors, you kids, I mean, it's the best!
No, we appreciate you, David, and the team, and we appreciate the finance team as well. Are there any questions or comments for David? Okay, you got off easy tonight. Take care.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we'll go ahead and move to our annual joint meeting of City Council and the Planning Commission. We're gonna actually reschedule this item for a future meeting, and we'll move into our Board and Commission reports. We'll go ahead and start with the Community Services Commission. Chair Seismar, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor Schwank, Mayor Potem Stewart, and City Council members. I am Kathy Seismar. I am the chairperson for the Community Services Commission. We are a commission of five. We have our newest commissioners, Ernest Castro, we have you on Hawks, Jeff Kingsburg, Gary Adi is our vice chair, and myself. The purpose of our commission is to review and make recommendations on topics related to the Parks and Rec element of the general plan, and to provide Parks and Rec services and programming for the community. Next slide. Our last meeting was on Monday, February the thirteenth. We approved the action minutes for the January ninth meeting. We also had a presentation from Stacy Fox in Public Works on some playground equipment and safety servicing projects. We have some really fun upgrades and remodels coming to some of our parks in 2023. And one of the items that all of our commissioners were very complimentary about and recognized was the accessibility and the inclusion that is involved in these park remodels. It's really gonna be, really be something else. We also had a very thorough discussion of our commission's mission, what we were organized to do, and our priorities. We talked a lot about what our priorities are gonna be and our vision for the upcoming year, and we are looking forward to sharing that with you at our annual meeting, which will be on March fourteenth. And I did wanna include something that just keeps coming up, meeting after meeting. All of our commissioners are just very involved in all the elements of community services, and something that keeps coming up is just accolades for the staff, just good experiences with the staff at all the different events and services that we participate in. We will be having our next meeting, which will be on Monday, March thirteenth. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Chair Seismar. We'll move on to our Planning Commission. Chair Turley Trejo.
Hello. I have a short report tonight. We met a couple weeks ago on February fifteenth for revocation of a CUP, and tomorrow night, we meet at 6:00 PM to hear information on a resolution. So, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to our Public Traffic Safety Commission and Chair Carter. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, city staff.
Can you, Chair, can you turn on your mic?
Start again.
There you go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff. Public Safety Traffic, Public Traffic Safety Commission consists of five commissioners. Commissioner Ackerman, myself is the chair, David Maddox is the co-chair, James Richardson, and Bradley Sullivan. We meet the fourth Thursday of each month where we review and make recommendations through the council on topics related to speed zones, stop signs, signals, pavement markings, traffic design and engineering, along with other items as directed. Our last meeting was February twenty-third, last week, last Thursday. Our first item on our agenda, Jennifer Hennessy, the Director of Finance, conducted an annual budget engagement session designed to engage commission members early in the development of the 2324 Annual Operating Capital Improvement Program budget process. We were given an opportunity to provide feedback to support programs, projects, and events, which the council will review during their upcoming budget workshop in May. This was just a receive and file item, which we received and filed. Item number two on our agenda, city staff provided a thorough stop control analysis regarding the feasibility of implementing all-way stop controls and pedestrian crossings on Pujoal Street at Main Street to address concerns of excessive speeding and lack of pedestrian crossings. The recommendation from staff was to recommend to the city council to adopt a resolution establishing those multi-way stop controls at that intersection, and also have staff implement striped pedestrian crosswalks. Commission voted 5-0 to approve the staff's recommendation. And that's all we had. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Alright, appreciate you. Thank you so much. Okay, our public safety report brought to you this evening by Chief Crater. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and community members. A little bit different look on the report that I'm doing this month. It's a new year, and we're turning the page. This report goes through operation, prevention, training, and emergency management. I'll give you the breakdown for last year, or last month, in January 2023. The calls ran in the city of Temecula. Total of eight hundred and twenty-eight calls ran in the city. Sixty-six of those were traffic collisions, five hundred and eighty-six were medical-related calls, nine fires in the city, and a bunch of ringing alarms, well, false alarms. So, breaking that down, I know that we do have a ring and alarm ordinance in the city, but you could see that's still holding at two. That is good for us at the fire department, and we appreciate the city's support in that ordinance. Next page. Here you could see what you're running, the stations are running in each district. Station ninety-two, ninety-five, eighty-four, twelve, and seventy-three, and then corresponding under the station in yellow is the number of calls ran out of those stations in the city limits. Next page. Moving on to fire prevention, plan checks and reviews, we're still really busy. Five hundred and twenty-nine for last month. New construction inspections, three hundred and ninety-five. Annual inspections, three fifty-nine, which are mandated by the state of California. And then, we had twenty-seven folks come in to our counter for public inquiries. Next page, please. Alright, our TCC program, volunteers here in the city did two hundred and ten training hours. They received two applications. They have one new volunteer in the program. They had six volunteer meetings and two training events. CPR AED program, we had four classes. Stop the Bleed program, we had one course. Healthcare provider BLS program CPR in the city, we had one, and that was a recert for a city employee. And then, our Heart Saver First Aid Program, we had three courses in the city. The real highlight here is at Great Oaks High School, we did hands-on CPR and Stop the Bleed training there, with TCSD Aquatics, Temecula Valley Hospital, Inland Valley Medical Center, Promona Valley Hospital, and the school district. So, we were able to teach sixteen hundred kids and adults at the school on the importance of CPR and how to do it properly, and also our Stop the Bleed program, which has been on the forefront, I think, you know, locally with some of the mass shootings we've had, people wanna know this stuff, and I think it's good that our community knows that. So, here's some pictures from that event. I think it was well attended. You can see the Stop the Bleed and the hands-on CPR being done. And on the big screen there in the gym, it's giving instructions as well. Next page. For emergency management, in January, the local hazard mitigation plan is working its way through the Plan Commission. It's currently at Cal OES for approval. Emergency manager attended a PIO class and media relations. The emergency operation plan is still pending approval to be placed on the city council to be adopted. And you could see where we are on our grants and claims. Community presentations, too, and then we have a backpack program for having a go-bag at home, the essentials that you would need in case of emergencies so you're self-sufficient for 24 hours. Three hundred and twenty of those have been distributed year-to-date. The last storms were in management watch and at normal level. Can we go back a slide, please? One thing I wanted to do, we had a survivor of CPR where our firefighters were directly involved in saving a life, and I wanted to invite Stephanie Natter here and her husband, Dylan, to come up and share their story, if you would. I think it's important to see that chain of survival from our 911 dispatcher giving instructions to Dylan over the phone to our firefighter showing up and giving excellent care to the hospital, being able to save her life. So, I'll let her share her story. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening. Thank you to Chief Crater for giving me this opportunity to share my story. My name is Stephanie Natter, and on September twenty-fifteenth, 2022, at 10:34 AM, I died. I'm thirty-nine years old, with no prior health conditions. I played sports all my life growing up, and I stayed active, and my heart just stopped. I went into cardiac arrest. I didn't have a heart attack. Many people know the difference, but some of you may not, and I'd like to share the difference. The American Heart Association states, "A heart attack occurs when the blood flow to the heart is stopped. A heart attack is a circulation problem." Cardiac arrest occurs when the heart malfunctions and stops beating unexpectedly. Cardiac arrest is an electrical problem. That morning was just like any other morning. Got my kids ready for school, made my husband breakfast, and I went upstairs and laid back in bed. I was on the phone with my best friend, who is an ER nurse. We were catching up about the previous days and sharing stories. I made an Instagram post of my son's water polo game the night before, and my heart just stopped. I stopped responding to Jill, and she immediately knew something was wrong. She heard me take my last breath and immediately conference my husband in on the phone call. Coincidentally, he was downstairs with no meetings to attend for work, and was able to come up to our bedroom. He came up and found me laying in our bed, lifeless and blue, and at that point, he knew he had to do something. He put me down on the floor and called 911. He was led for nine minutes doing chest compressions by the dispatcher until help arrived. At that point, Engine ninety-six and ninety-two arrived at our home, and they took over chest compressions. I was shocked six times by an AED and received an IO port in my shin. After thirty minutes, I regained a pulse and was transported to Temecula Valley ER. Once I arrived there, I coded again and received four more shocks and was intubated. A few hours later, I was moved to ICU, where I coded again. Again, CPR was administered, and I was brought back. At that point, I was put on 100% life support for five days. After five days, I woke up with no broken ribs, no neurological disorders, deficits, and no motor skill issues. I was alive and able because of CPR done by my husband and the first responders. After day ten, at day ten, I was discharged and walked out of the hospital. A couple weeks after being home, my family, close friends, and I were able to reunite with ninety-six and ninety-two, as well as the dispatcher, and we were able to thank them and hug them and show our gratitude for the role that they played. Each member of that crew was vital in my survival and necessary that day. A few of the medics even told me that their outcomes aren't always this way, and that they have never had a survivor be able to hug or thank them. That day will forever be special for me. I'm grateful to my best friend for the intuition and sense to hear something that was wrong. I'm grateful for my husband, who was home and started CPR immediately. I am grateful for the experienced and knowledgeable medics that came to my home. I'm grateful for a hospital that is close by in our town that also gave amazing care and were compassionate to my family. I'm grateful for the skilled nurses and doctors as well. I'm grateful to be here and to be able to share my story, to share the awareness and educate people about saving people's lives with CPR, how important it is. I'm grateful to be able to be a mom to my two kids and to be able to share my story with you guys today. I'd like to acknowledge ninety-six. They are now extended family. They are here today, supporting me, and as well as my husband. They saved my life, and the chain of survival works. Heroes are just ordinary people who know what to do. You never know when the first responder is going to be you. Thank you.
Stephanie, thank you for feeling comfortable enough to share that story with us, and I gotta admit, I'm holding back tears when you start talking about your children and your family and things like that, and how important community is to each and every one of us. So, thank you. We're glad and fortunate that you're here with us this evening. So, thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Chief Crater. Okay, only uplifting public comments this evening, folks. We'll move into public comments for non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments this evening?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have several public comments on agendized items and non-agendized items. So, we'll take non-agendized items at this time. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The rules are provided for in the printed agenda. The first speaker is Kathy Seismar, to be followed by Joseph Komroski.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Mayor Schwank, Mayor Potem Stewart, City Council members, and our executive staff, but most importantly, residents of Temecula. I am Kathy Seismar. I am the incoming District Committee Chair for the Takwitz Scouting District of Boy Scouts of America, serving youth and adults in southwest Riverside County. But tonight, I'm here as an Assistant Scout Master for Temecula Boy Scout Troop 148, chartered by the VFW Post 4089. I am privileged to be attending this meeting tonight with scouts from Temecula's Troop 148. They are all working on the Citizenship in the Community Merit Badge, and over the past eight weeks, these scouts have learned what it takes to be a good citizen in their community, including what their rights, their duties, and their obligations are as citizens of our city. They've discovered what our city is known for, and they've learned a little bit about Temecula's history. They've also learned about some local issues, and we've had a very engaging discussion about the future of Temecula Skate Park, and they shared with me some of their ideas about potential action sports opportunities in our city. As part of their merit badge, they will be completing eight hours of community service benefiting a local nonprofit in our city. Tonight, they had the opportunity to meet with Mayor Schwank to Tour City Hall and learn about local government. Serving all youth, both boys and girls, scouting with Boy Scouts of America is thriving in Temecula. In 2022, eight hundred and sixty-seven Temecula youth participated in BSA programs, which includes our fifteen scouting units. We have PACs, troops, and we have fire, police, highway patrol, and medical explorer posts here in the city. Last year, forty-four Temecula scouts achieved scouting's highest rank of Eagle Scout. Just a sample of some of the scouting Eagle Scout projects, we've had benefiting Temecula organizations. We did a owl box and five birdhouses for migratory birds for the Rose Haven Heritage Rose Garden. We also had an Eagle Scout create six composting containers for the rose garden. The Temecula Valley Unified School District, St. Thomas and St. Catherine's Church are just some of the beneficiaries in Temecula of Eagle Scout projects last year. I wanna say thank you to Mayor Schwank for meeting with our scouts tonight and helping each of these scouts be prepared to be better citizens and future leaders in their community. Thank you.
The next speaker is Joseph Komroski, to be followed by Jim McLaughlin.
Welcome. Greetings. I'm Joseph Komroski, and yes, uplifting comments only. I first wanted to thank the City Council and city staff, and I wanna congratulate Mr. Calvis for winning your race, Mr. Brown for winning your race, Mr. Schwank for getting voted in mayor, Mr. Stewart and Mrs. Alexander for hanging in there, and thank you all for serving our wonderful city. I'm here tonight on behalf of Neighborhood Drop, and I'm a fellow board member. President, Vice President Adam and Alex are back there with me. We are, as what we would say in skater and surfer terms, very stoked at what's on your consent, you know, calendar tonight, the consultant agreement for a new skate park. Yes, and we're very pleased, and we're greatly appreciative of your efforts. I remember me and Adam met with Zach a year and a half ago, and we didn't know what to expect when we said, "We really need a new skate park." And then, he had me at, "I was thinking about doing something like Prince Park," and I was stunned, and it showed me the depth and breadth of our mayor, that that is an amazing skate park. And so, I think you'll be pleased that you've chosen Spon Ranch as a potential designer, or designer for the skate park. Yes, and what else do I got? Let me see. I think, I think that's about it. Thank you so much, everybody.
Great, thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Jim McLaughlin, to be followed The next speaker is Jim McLaughlin, to be followed by Bob Cowell.
Welcome. Good evening, council members, city staff, and citizens. My name is Jim McLaughlin. I've been a resident of Temecula for about fifteen years. I attended the last city council meeting two weeks ago because I hadn't been in a while, and I was interested in getting to know the new kids on the block. It wasn't that long ago that Mayor Schwank was the new kid on the block, and so I was kind of checking him out, too. The most interesting part of the meeting for me was the last discussion, the one about putting a vote for term limits on the ballot. Now, on that issue, I don't feel strongly either way. I know there are compelling narratives for both sides. I listened to the discussion, and there was a little real pushback at first. A phrase uttered more than once was, "Well, I don't have a problem with it." Mayor Schwank went last and brought up his arguments against term limits, and I found those, he had some pretty valid points. After his comments, I thought, "Okay, now I know a little bit more about Mayor Schwank." Mayor Schwank also acknowledged his belief that if it were put on the ballot today, people would vote in favor of term limits. Following his comments, I heard Councilmember Kalfus refer to that comment, that people would vote in favor, and that that was all he needed to hear. I think that was a direct quote. I have two problems with that. One is it sounds like you weren't even considering the mayor's arguments. You cherry picked what you agreed with your point of view and dismissed the rest. Second, you believe that what's popular is more important than what's best, as in, "Well, if that's what the people want, we should give it to them." I think most would agree that that's not always a good idea. It's certainly no way to lead. In a representative form of government, we elect people to do the work of studying the issues, considering the validity and merit of the alternatives, and then to choose what's best. I know from personal experience that putting yourself in a leadership position for there to be any hope of being effective requires self-reflection and growth, which is often very uncomfortable, but it's also how leaders are forged. It's humbling, and I find humility to be an admirable quality in a leader. I wish you well, I really do, all of you, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Bob Cowell, to be followed by Dario Bianchi.
Hello there. I have a couple of things to say. Sheriff Bianco has been under attack by the state dictators, and I'd like to ask that there be a resolution in behalf of him, support him instead of the investigation, this crazy investigation that people are putting upon him. And if you don't know it, it is crazy. So, please have a resolution to support Chad Bianco in fighting the state on this. I appreciate if you did that. The second thing is, I don't know how the governor can have such power, but today he scheduled an end to COVID. So, we don't have any COVID anymore, no emergency, nothing to worry about. Yeah, that's what this governor says, yeah. So, having said that, we used to have a, we used to meet over here once a month, our club, and I'd like to do that again, if we can do that. So, I'd like to, somebody can have a resolution or a motion or something to allow nonprofits or other groups to have that room across the way, conference center, since there is no state of emergency anymore. A little history, well, oh, a friend of mine in Huntington Beach, they just passed a flag law there, just allowing official flags. I know this comes up later in the item twelve, but an old friend of mine, he used to be a state senator and assemblyman, they just made it so only official American state flags can be flown. So, you can't have a Confederate flag, you can't have any kind of weird flag up there. You just have normal flags. In the state, in our state, we have fifty-eight counties. We have four hundred and eighty cities with, most of them, well, probably over four hundred, have been less than a hundred thousand people. A hundred and twenty of them are charter cities. Charter cities have an embellishment to them that they have the power over municipal affairs. There's a question on that, and I'd like you to look at YouTube, Home Rule in California Cities. It's put up on the League of Cities. It's the best thing I've ever seen on it. It talks about the power of a general city, like you have here, and the power of a charter city. And what, a charter city has a lot more power against the state, the dictatorship of the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Dario Bianchi.
Thank you. Good evening. So, let's start to be non-divisive, since there is division in this country, and I'm very concerned about that, okay? And to do so, we have to talk about one of the most divisive issues of today, or the last five years at least. Critical race theory is part of a system of Marxist-related social theories developed by academics that is, at its heart, a defamatory claim that America is systematically racist, okay? I know something about that. My wife, she's African-American, okay? The percept of critical race theory have now burst outside the university and permeates our corporation, government, military, and especially our school. Under the guise of code words such as equity, anti-racism, inclusion, inflation, leftist, today promote critical race theory perceived through American institutions. The profoundly radical elements of critical race theory springs from Marxist segment of the academic far left alongside other extreme school of thought. According to critical race theory, all Western civilization, especially America, is infused to the core with white supremacists. So, my idea would be this. We have the ready commission here, race, equity, diversity, inclusion. I suggest to the city council to change race, equality, and diversity. That would be fair. That would be non-divisive, because equity and inclusion is divisive to us, to my family, to the American people. So, I'm asking you to take a stand on this and do not divide the United States as much as we are already. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
That concludes in-person comments. I do have two email comments.
Okay.
So, and we still have time in the thirty minutes, so we'll go ahead and read those two comments into the record. The first is from Rick Reese, and it was also submitted verbatim by Rich Handy. This commentary regards multiple topics, so let's get directly to the points. On February twenty-eighth, the governor is scheduled to end the COVID-19 state of emergency for California. If the city of Temecula still has an emergency resolution in effect due to the very likely Wuhan-China originated COVID-19 virus lab leak caused pandemic, then now is the time to retire or vacate this emergency resolution. Our city needs a return to normalcy and an end to this indefinite and seemingly forever state of emergency. Just as a point of order, it has become very apparent that past references to this lab-created pandemic, as the China virus actually have a lot of truth. The tyrannical Chinese communists have earned this distinction. Let them bear the burden of this truth with no apologies on America's part. Next, in regards to item twelve, it is imperative for the city council to stand up for local control of city zoning and to push back against the SB nine and SB ten power grab by Sacramento. Much like a totalitarian political borough, the governor and the legislature are seizing local control and centralizing that power in Sacramento. City councils have become little more than rubber stamps for Sacramento's edicts. The council should also emulate cities like San Marcos Del Mar, Rancho Santa Margarita, and many others by supporting the Brand-Wang-Mendoza tripartisan land use initiative. Please do not waver to Sacramento by falling for their planned and promoted accessory dwelling units. Sacramento's power grab is a dystopian attempt at bad urban planning that utilizes a cookie-cutter approach to all of California's geographically and culturally diverse cities and communities. If anything, this political borough-like approach to urban planning is in reality anti-diversity. Their scheme seeks top-down conformity of communities that are as different as the desert is to the mountains and as different as a beach community is to our wine country. Lastly, in regards to business item number fourteen concerning a ballot measure to establish city council term limits, this should indeed move forward to the voters. Yet there also seems to be the need to properly define what constitutes a city council term of office. If a vacancy occurs and is filled by a council appointee to fulfill, say, a remaining forty-four months in office, should this forty-four months count as a full term? Or should an even shorter term of office of, say, two years minus one day be considered as a partial term that qualifies the number to three more full terms? These potential wrinkles need to be addressed. If this has not already been considered, then the council needs to further deliberate. Otherwise, a council member in theory could serve a less than four-year partial term, then be elected and re-elected to end up serving fourteen, fifteen, or close to sixteen years in office. Thank you for your time and attention, and Godspeed to the Chinese people. And then the last comment emailed in is from Polly Steinbeck. Women are regularly getting drugged in local Temecula bars, and the owner should be looked into. I would like to submit a public comment on this matter to the city council. Mr. Mayor, that is all of the in-person and emailed comments for non-agendized items.
Okay, and we'll take the items, the comments on agenda items at that time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to our city council reports. Do any of my colleagues have anything they'd like to report out?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that March first, tomorrow, starts Women's History Month, so you're invited, everyone's invited to come out March ninth at six PM to hear the council chambers, to hear the commissioners proclaim March as Women's History Month, and there you receive presentations, and then also hear from speakers that will raise awareness to Women's History Month, as well as speak to some of the work that still needs to be done in regards to gender equality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Alexander.
All righty, well, thank you so much first to the sheriff department. I had another ability to go on a ride-along over the weekend. This time, I was able to go with the metro team. Again, most of you probably weren't here the last meeting. So, I try to go on these things about quarterly every couple months, just to get a feel as to what's going on here in the city with our, here in Old Town and in different areas, and see if there's any gaps that maybe I can see where we can kind of fill in together. So, I just, I had a great ride-along. I was even able, I had the opportunity to go down and see the police station right here, right next here to city council, to city hall, and it was wonderful. And it was just good to see that these guys have a place to kind of start and stop from. It's kind of close to home, somewhere to be able to detain the individuals until they can get the paperwork done. So, I just want to say thank you to staff for getting that done. Great job to everybody for putting that all together. It was really good, and I believe it's really going to help our public safety overall. That also being said, we had a, probably one of our first in a while Public Traffic Safety Commission meetings with myself, Mr. Carter, and Mr. Maddox as well, commissioners. And it was, and also, I think you were in there as well, right? Yeah, the two of us. We, myself and city council member Kalfus, we were able to have the conversation as to how to move forward with this commission, and really all of them moving forward with how the city council and the staff can work together. So, I just want to thank you both for coming in and speaking with us. I just look forward to having more meetings and just giving, like we spoke about, more goals as to how everything's going to be structured with that commission. The last bit, I guess I'm just going to ask city manager, I don't know if it's a better time now or later. I know somebody during comments had asked about the state of the city or the city emergency for the state. Where do we fall on that? Do we fall under the state? Does that get canceled?
City of Temecula is not under a state of emergency.
Okay, thank you very much. And that's all, yeah, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Nothing else from any of my colleagues, and I have nothing this evening, so we'll move on to our consent calendar. All matters listed on our consent are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. Item number one is waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Item two is approve action minutes of February fourteenth, 2023. Item number three is approve list of demands. Item number four is approve First Amendment to Agreement with Proactive Fire Design and Consulting, Inc. for Fire Department Plan Review Service for Fiscal Year 2022/2023. Item number five is approve consultant agreement with Community Works Design Group for the Ronald Reagan Sports Park Skate Park, PW twenty-two dash zero seven. Item six is approve agreements for on-call excavation, backfill, and grading maintenance services for fiscal year 2023 through 2028. Item number seven is approve increase to the professional services contingency authorization for the Margarita Recreation Center Project, PW seventeen dash two one. And item number eight is approve plans and specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for the Mary Phillips Senior Center Outdoor Recreation Project, PW twenty-two dash zero eight. And item number nine is accept improvements and file notice of completion for the Santa Catuta's Pedestrian Bicycle Trail Extension and Interconnect Project, PW zero eight dash zero four. I will entertain a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let us vote. Okay, and that passes five-zero. Before I recess and move on to our Temecula Community Services District Meeting, we do have an addendum to the agenda, and I'd like to hand it off to our city attorney at this time for a brief staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As you know, the city experienced some very heavy rains over the weekend, and there were a couple of places where there were some substantial damage to storm drains and to roadways. The Brown Act normally requires that all items be listed on the agenda except in emergency situations such as this. So, staff is recommending that you adopt a motion that would add an agenda item to the agenda as a late action item, finding that the need to take immediate action to repair these storm damages is, requires immediate action, and that that issue came to the attention of the city after the agenda was posted. And that's authorized by Government Code Section 54954.2. So, that would be the initial action that you take, and then I think after that, Mr. Thomas will explain what has occurred, and then there's a resolution providing for the emergency work to be done.
Okay. Any questions of staff from council members right now? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to add that item to the agenda.
Second.
No, a motion first and then a second.
A motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Let us vote. Okay, and that passes five-zero. And now, we can come to that item, and I will turn it over to our public works director, Pat Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor Schwank. So, the events that occurred over the weekend, where we had, we found a couple of sinkholes at a few locations where storm drains are located. One of those is on Margarita Road, just north of Solano Way, on the west side of Margarita Road, and we've televised that storm drain and found that the storm drain actually did collapse, and so we'll need to replace a portion of that storm drain. There's actually a road closure in place at that location right now. So, that's one of the areas that is included. And the second area is at the eastern end of Santiago Road where it ends basically from Inez Road. There's a storm drain that, again, crosses Santiago Road that collapsed with the rains that needs to be repaired and replaced. And so, we're asking the council to adopt a resolution declaring these emergency conditions exist and exempting us from the bidding requirements so that we can move forward with directly repairing and replacing these storm drains. So, that concludes the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff on this item?
Nope.
Okay, no questions. Mr. City Attorney, do we need to read the resolution?
No, we don't.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to, a motion and a second to approve.
Subвод.
So, a motion and a second. Let us vote. Okay, I'm not seeing anything. I don't think anyone's seeing anything on our screens. There we go. Okay, and that passes five-zero. Okay, thank you, everyone, for indulging us on that item. Okay, I will recess the Temecula City Council meeting and turn it over to President Stewart for the Community Services District Meeting.
And I will open the Temecula Community Service District Meeting. Madam Secretary, please note, we're all still here. Madam Secretary, please note, we're all still here. Do we have any public comments? All right, so we're on to our consent calendar, which is item number ten, approve action minutes of February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote. All right, that passes five-zero. Director report.
Nothing tonight.
Perfect. General managers.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
All right. So anything from the board members? Nothing. I will adjourn this meeting till the next one.
Okay, and with that, I'm going to reconvene the Temecula Public Financing Authority. Madam City Clerk, please note, we are all still here. Do we have any public comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to consent. Item eleven, approve action minutes of February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let us vote. Okay, and that passes five-zero. Executive Director's report.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Board of Directors, anything? Okay, we're going to head and adjourn the TPFA meeting to our Temecula City Council meeting, and we have a public hearing for item number twelve. It's adopt ordinance amending Title V and seventeen of the Temecula Municipal Code pertaining to massage establishment, accessory dwelling units, car wash, flagpole height limits, conditional use permits, parking garage standards, open space zoning designation, live entertainment, alcohol beverage manufacturer, and active and passive recreation, and find that this ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines Section 15061B3. That was a lot. I'll have a staff report, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Mark. I'll be presenting this item for you today. As you mentioned, this is LR two-two dash zero one eight-two, amending Titles V and seventeen of the Temecula Municipal Code. A little bit of background, the Temecula Municipal Code was originally adopted in nineteen ninety. Since its adoption, the Temecula City Council has periodically made amendments to various sections of the code to improve its clarity, correct discrepancies, improve processes, and implement state law. This proposed ordinance would amend Title V, Business License and Regulations, and Title seventeen, zoning, the Temecula Municipal Code. A little bit of the history of the ordinance, this ordinance was presented to the Planning Commission Municipal Code Maintenance Subcommittee on November second of twenty twenty-two, and this item was presented to the Full Planning Commission on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, and Resolution Number twenty-two dash thirty-four was adopted, recommending city council approve the ordinance. Staff presented the City Council General Plan Update Ad Hoc Subcommittee on January twenty-fourth, and staff briefed the mayor and remaining council members individually on February fourteenth and February sixteenth. Everyone's seen this. So jump right into the changes. There's a few of them, starting with Title V, specifically dealing with massage establishments and the exemptions to them. This would clarify that massage establishment, that chair massage businesses are only exempt from the maximum number of massage establishments, and no conversion of chair massage businesses are permitted. A new massage business license would be required. And for operations of massage establishments, it would require all massage businesses to establish and maintain a dedicated telephone physically located at the business and is capable of dialing out specifically to nine-one-one. Jumping into Title seventeen, our Open Space Conservation District would modify the Open Space Conservation zoning designation definition to include passive recreational uses and limit profit generating activity to unlimited term. For the schedule of permitted uses for open space and open space conservation zoning designations, we're going to include bicycle pass as a permitted use, and we're going to clarify that communication and microwave installations are not permitted in any open space zoning designation. Title seventeen continues. For our definitions, we're going to consolidate guesthouse and secondary dwelling unit with that of the accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, and expand that definition of ADU to include an efficiency unit and manufactured home in accordance with state law. We're going to add definitions for recreation use as active and recreation use as passive, and we're going to modify the definition of alcoholic beverage manufacturer to include the accessory use of a single food truck at their location, subject to the requirements of Riverside County Ordinance Number five-eight-zero and the Temecula Municipal Code. All right, Title seventeen continued. For our approved specific plans, we're just going to update the numbers of the adopted specific plans to include Uptown Temecula and the Altair specific plans. And then for our schedule of permitted uses, for PDOs Number four and PDO ten, we're going to implement the requirements of Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero-six, the Live Entertainment Ordinance. This was previously passed, we're implementing it for these two PDOs. Our Title seventeen continued. For our residential districts, we're going to remove the guesthouse as an approved residential accessory use. ADUs will be used in that place. And for residential accessory structures, we will remove the guesthouse and the associated note from the table. ADUs will be used instead. And for the schedule of permitted uses for PDO Number two, we will remove the guesthouse and secondary dwelling unit and add ADU as an approved by right accessory use. And for our ADU standards, we're going to require all utility equipment, such as window heating or cooling devices, be screened from public view, and then it would incorporate the requirement of AB three forty-five, which is the separate conveyance of ADUs. For our conditional use permits, we're going to require all establishments that have a CUP that includes the onsite consumption of alcohol to physically post their CUP to include conditions of approval onsite. All right. For our supplemental development standards, we're going to clarify that the existing separation from a car wash and residential property is to the residential property line, inclusive of all vacuum equipment, air compressors, any motors, or pretty much anything that makes noise. And then we're going to implement parking garage standards. These are safety standards dealing with lighting, visibility, signage, fencing, and not design guidelines. Okay, flagpoles. We have two sections we're going to be amending for our flagpole height limits. There was a discrepancy in the code. We had one that referenced a seventy-five-foot flagpole height limit and one referenced a fifty. We're correcting that, and we went with the fifty-foot height limit. So for our planning and zoning approval authority, we're going to require all modifications, all modification applications to a CUP go before a public hearing for consideration. And then for our schedule of permitted uses for commercial office and industrial uses, we're going to correct a reference for adult business. This doesn't change adult businesses at all, we're simply changing a reference so the citizenry can go to the right section. That's it. So our SEQA determination, staff has determined that the proposed ordinance is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA pursuant to Title fourteen, Chapter three, California Code of Regulations, Section one five zero six one B three. Staff recommendation is that, staff recommends that the city council introduce and read by title only the proposed ordinance. And I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Any questions? Mayor Pretend Stewart.
So have we ever had a flagpole higher than fifty feet in the city of Temecula?
We do. South end of town by the seventy-six and the Jack-in-the-Box at the end down there, that one is well in excess. This would not require any flagpole that is above that height limit to be taken down, modified in any way. It would be considered legal nonconforming and could exist in perpetuity as long as it's maintained.
Got it.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you so much, by the way, for that presentation.
Of course.
Okay, so one, I think mine was kind of the same thing with the flagpole, because I know that over there, I believe it's a garrison flag that's on that flagpole in itself. I guess just why are we making it lower? Is there any specific reasons? Because I look at it just, you know, once we get lower on anything, it's harder to bring it back up to, you know, maybe if somebody wants to come in and put in a seventy-five-foot flag.
No, we, there was no reason. We went with the conservative of the two numbers, and that was it.
Okay.
There was a discrepancy, and we went with that.
Okay, is there?
Yeah, can I add a little bit to that? Typically, everything we do, we like to analyze the heck out of it and have this very, you know, articulated justification. In this case, there was just two separate allowances in the code, and we picked fifty feet to be reasonable. If the council would like to raise that, lower it, set no limit, I mean, that's really up to the council. We just had a discrepancy in the code, and we needed to clarify it, so we chose fifty feet, because we thought that was reasonable. And that's really it.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Is that something that we want to have a conversation about? And maybe just leaving it? Because there was some people that, you know, if it's seventy-five, the max, we can just leave it. I don't think it's really hurting anybody, and what, how awesome to be able to see the American flag at seventy-five feet up. That's what I say, so I don't know what your gentleman's thought is.
I like seventy-five feet.
I like no limit.
Amen.
As high as they can build the flag. Like, if they can put a five-hundred-foot flagpole, let's do it.
Okay. Should we do it?
Luke said we could do no limit. I mean, no limit is better than seventy-five.
You might have some issues with the FAA with a five-hundred-foot.
Put that in the resolution. I don't have a problem with it. I mean, clearly, it was just picking a number, and it's fine with me.
Absolutely.
I don't have a problem with it.
Seventy-five?
Seventy-five.
Well, I mean, no limit is better than, and if we're going to be better than, we should be better than.
Well, what's your thought? Seventy-five or higher?
Luke is no limit problematic, or do we have to have?
It looks like.
It's hard to say, but yeah, no limit probably would end up causing some problems somewhere along the line, so I think seventy-five would be more than reasonable. That's extremely high.
The maintenance of over seventy-five gets to be different.
Yeah, you need a helicopter.
At a certain point, you're going to have to put lights on it to, you know, warn aircraft and things like that, so.
Okay, seventy-five's fine with me.
Okay, we good with that?
Yep.
I just got a couple, just for my understanding also. So with the massage parlors, we know, obviously, this has been an ongoing thing. Why, why do, are we going to specifically key our ordinance to the massage parlor for a phone? Is there anybody else who has to have that same thing, or like, having a phone in there? Or what does that look like?
It was primarily because of the enforcement actions going on throughout the city. There was times when the police code enforcement building and safety fire would show up during normal hours of operation, and the business would appear closed, and there was no way to physically reach them inside. Their contact number would ring to a cell phone or a business line not at the location, and they could just say, we're not home. So this way, we can have the phone inside ringing, and we know that they're going to physically be there. And there's also a safety issue for any business that involves physical contact between people.
Okay. Do we ever, do we have that with other organizations or businesses as well, to be able to have that in there as well to?
We're only proposing it for these massage establishments. There was an actual, very specific incident where a gentleman went to cardiac arrest, and no one in the facility had a phone. So we have a very specific reason for requiring it in this circumstance. So we hadn't analyzed any other business type, just the massage establishments.
Okay, all right. And my last one, and I'm done, just, it was brought up about the ADUs. If you can, do me a favor and just kind of discuss what that is in detail. How the state in itself, do they have any control over that? Why are we doing, why are we doing what we're doing?
Well, yeah, so going back to just a few years ago, ADU laws started to be issued by the state legislature. Essentially, those laws make ADUs a by-right use within the city of Temecula. So anyone who has a home can do an ADU. The state dictated that, and that's the law of the land. So what we're doing here tonight is not in any way changing or attempting to circumvent or anything to do with the primary laws that make ADUs permitted uses. What we're doing is clarifying in the code. So over time, the code has had definitions for guesthouse and accessory dwelling unit and efficiency unit and granny flat and second home, and all these different definitions for what is essentially the same thing. So what we're proposing is to take all those individual definitions and just call them ADUs. Part of that is required by the state, but we took it a little further to capture all of the other definitions that we want, you know, all the other designations that we want to create a consistent definition for. And that does a couple of things. It also, it makes it, the code easier to use for the public. They can't, am I doing a granny flat, or am I doing a guesthouse, or am I doing an ADU? It's all the same thing. Effectively, it's all the same thing. So it makes it easier, it makes it easier for staff to administer, and it also allows staff and the city to get credit under our arena numbers at the state when an ADU is created, because we have, as you all know, arena numbers, and we need to make progress towards the satisfaction of those numbers, and we need them to be actually defined as an ADU in the code for us to be able to tell the state, an ADU was created here, and we get credit for it. If it's called a guesthouse, if it's called this, that, or the other thing, we, it'll be much harder for us to get credit for it. So that's another reason we wanted to just make everything that is an ADU defined as an ADU.
Okay. All right.
I do have one question on the ADU. Are manufactured homes currently allowed in single-family zoning?
They are, and as an ADU, they would be as well.
Is there a minimum square foot requirement?
It is the minimum of an efficiency unit. I believe it's a hundred and twenty-five square feet, but I could give back with you the exact answer.
And then just pertaining to this specific ordinance, if approved, a manufactured home would be approved as an ADU currently? It is separate than an ADU? You'd have to get a permit for a manufactured home on a single-family zone property? Rather than now, it would just be an ADU under one umbrella?
Well, right now, state law allows the manufactured home. We're just updating our code to reflect that. So they could come in right now with a manufactured home as an ADU under state law.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions? All right, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing for comments. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
Yes, we have one in-person comment and then one emailed comment. The in-person comment is from Bob Cal.
Okay, welcome.
I came here with the idea that this was an omnibus bill that had all this new stuff in it, and I came to understand that it is actually changing certain items in the bill or the law, the ordinance. And I just looked at how many items were on here, and there's, oh, let me see, there's a lot. And it goes from, let's see, one to nineteen items, from everything from flagpole heights to ADUs. Well, the ADUs is the thing that caught my eye, it caught the eye of Rick Reese, who wrote something on this. It's, it was, it's time to really stand up as every city in California should do against the state mandates. If you don't stand up now, what mandate will they put down on us next? This changes the law in here to Governance Code, Section sixty-five eight five two point two, has the same as, to me, amended from time to time. So it doesn't actually give you any power at all. You're just rubber-stamping something the state is telling you to do. So why are you even voting on it? Why are you here? If you're, if you're not, if you, if you have to vote on this ADU, then because you're going to miss funding, or you're going to have the state come in, as I've been told, well, why don't two of you just say no to this particular piece of it, and the three pass it, and it still passes? I don't want it to pass, but I think you have more power than you think. There's other cities in this state that do, that are standing up against these mandates, these dictates, that, what will they dictate next? I just want to know. You know, Section three, on page three, it's already in there, and it's, every conservationist in this, in this room, including myself, I'm a conservationist, believe it or not, environmental findings, the city council hereby finds that this ordinance is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Title fourteen of the California Code of Regulations. It actually supersedes itself. How can a law, one law, supersede another without a court case going on? There's got to be some fight back here. If you don't fight back, somebody's got to fight back. There are other cities that are standing up against this law. I hope that you stand up against it too, or at least you put, a few of you stand up and say, I don't want to support this particular thing. I understand that there's a lot of other things in this ordinance that are good. I don't think it should have been put in all-in-one ordinance. It should have been broken out. Just my opinion. Go back to the charter city idea. You have in that ability to stand up against municipal codes at the state level. If you created a charter city, you have as much power, or more power than the state does. That power came from a law in eighteen fifty-nine, excuse me, eighteen seventy-nine. Twenty years the state controlled the cities until the cities took the state back. So I just recommend that you, when you look at this, vote no on that particular item. You can vote yes on the rest. Oh, and by the way, when you have a flagpole, there's plenty of flagpoles bigger than fifty feet where I live. But, in the law, I noticed that already, it's codified that a single flag of the United States of America, 'cause you can fly a flag, okay, you can fly an American flag, and two of the following flags shall be allowed per parcel or center. Okay, so we're talking about, you know, city property, or public property, or private property. I don't know, is it city? I don't know if it means public property or private property. Anyway, so the state of California, or any other state of the United States, so if I wanna fly a Mississippi flag, I can fly a Mississippi flag, a Hawaiian flag, a Galaskan flag. Maybe somebody's here from out of town, you can add another country to it, China, et cetera. A municipality, or official flag of other countries, flags of national and internationally recognized organizations, and corporate flags. Something's wrong with that law, thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
That was the only in-comment speaker, and then we have one email comment from Jessica Christopher. I believe it is, as to item number 12, I believe it is unconstitutional for the state to tell local government what zoning we should have. I understand the difficulty that opposing SB nine and SB 10 pose to our coffers. I think the workaround that is presented is likely the best that can be done, but I don't like section 15, seventeen point twenty-three point zero five zero E2. The parking limitations may be an excellent way to minimize the impact of these two horrible bills. In the long run, I believe it would benefit the city to fight these bills, SB nine being the worst of the two. And section 19C, flags. Number two, a single flag of the United States of America and two of the following flags shall be permitted per parcel or center, sections A, B, C, D. Even though this is, I believe, geared to business, I think it is unacceptable and an attack on freedom of speech. A company should be encouraged to fly the United States' flag, and it should be above others, but to say what other flags and how many are unacceptable. Item number 14, concerning a ballot measure to establish city council term limits. I want to commend city council members Alexander, Calphus, and Stewart for hearing the city's people and voting for this. I would only say that if someone is appointed to an open city council seat, that it be clarified and minimized so that they serve the least amount of time possible. Mr. Mayor, that's all the comments that we have on this item.
Okay, fantastic. Mr. City Attorney, do you need to read the ordinance?
Actually, I do not.
Okay.
Starting on January 1st of this year, the state legislature passed a law saying we don't have to read the titles so long as the city has the ordinance on its website and online, so everybody can read it, so.
Fantastic.
That's a big change from what we've had to do in the past.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve item number 12.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, let us vote.
City Clerk, a quick question for you, if there is something from this item that I wanna sustain from, or just give a reason for doing that, is now the time?
Uh, yes, before we vote.
Okay, can I do that, Mayor?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Okay, so, I'll tell you, I'm gonna be totally honest. These things, as I looked at them over the last week, or a couple days, I was able to dig in today, having some individuals come from our city and the area, Rick Reese brought some stuff up. Everybody should know where I stand as far as state control. I have never wanted the state's control here. We actually had a meeting today as far as having the state's control come into our city, and I'm quite sick of it. And I'm gonna, I have been standing, and I will stand as a city council member, no matter what, that this is our city, and we know what's best for our city and for our housing. Coming from what the comments came today, I understand what they're saying, because if we continue to allow this stuff and the language to come into our city, we are basically giving a thumbs up. My staff does an excellent job, and so I wanna thank you guys for all you're doing, but I will be sustaining, or I will sustain from nine, just because I feel, as a council member, I would need more information in order to be able to move forward, to give that a good thumbs up or thumbs down. But for everything else, I'd like to go and say yes to.
Okay, so you're gonna abstain from item number nine?
Yes.
Okay.
Could I get a point of clarification?
Absolutely.
Okay, so Luke, is this not just a cleanup in language? This is not, we've already approved all this stuff, correct?
Yeah, I mean, if it comes to ADUs, ADUs are, it's in state law.
Right.
So regardless of what our municipal code says, ADUs are allowed. This is just to, like I said, this is just a definitional thing, trying to create consistency in definitions.
This argument has already been done, we're just changing the wording to make it simpler and more understandable to the public.
Yes.
That, and so we can get credit at the state for arena.
Got it, I just wanted to make that clear. It seems like people have the wrong impression that somehow we're pushing through ADUs when that's already been done.
Right.
So.
Okay, anyone else have anything they'd like to abstain from? Okay, yeah, and I think that, you know, some of this stuff is, they elicit a certain reaction when we're just trying to clean this up to make it easier on staff and easier on the community. So, okay, entertain a motion to approve item number 12.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, let us vote. Okay, so that passes 5-0 with the noted abstentions. Okay, well, moving on to the business section of our calendar, we have item number 13, which is review fiscal year 2023-24 budget policies and priorities. And I'll go ahead and pass this over to Director Hennessy for a staff report.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. The item for you tonight is an agenda item that we do each year at the beginning of our budget process. I'll provide a brief background, we'll do a budget process overview. I'll give you the key highlights of the current year's budget, and then we'll review some budget priorities and budget policies that have been previously set by prior councils. So each year, at the beginning of our budget process, we bring this item to you. It is in accordance with our Government Finance Officers Association best practices. And what it includes is basically increasing the engagement of the council, commissions, and the public throughout the budget process. Do a financial policy review, use of other forms of communication, so they want an increase in videos, and social media, and the like, throughout our budget documents. And then do strategic planning process, and we have that outlined in our budget document, as well as include performance measures, they are now mandatory. The city's always included them, but they are now mandatory as part of this program. And the city has incorporated each of these requirements into our process. Each year in January, we begin our budget process by reviewing the current year revenues and expenditures, and then we also update our five-year financial projections. And then in February, we bring to you, the council, the mid-year budget update for the current year, and then we kick off the next year's budget and capital improvement program process. During the months of March and April, staff develops the proposed annual operating budget and CIP, and then that's presented to the council at the budget workshop in May, and that is your opportunity to review the proposed budget and CIP, and then provide any comments or changes that you'd like to see incorporated into the adopted budget, which is presented at the first meeting in June of each year. And then throughout the remainder of the year, July through December, finance works with departments to do ongoing analysis, reviewing budget to actuals for both revenues and expenditures, and identifying any adjustments that would be needed to be made at the future mid-year process. Budget adjustments for existing funding can be made administratively throughout the year, but any additional appropriations or new funding must be approved by council. There's several key deliverables throughout the budget process, the first of which is the preliminary budget. And this is an internal document that contains all of the departmental requests. That's developed in the March-April timeframe, and then that's presented to the city manager, who reviews that and then makes his recommendations into what we call the proposed budget. And the proposed budget is what is presented at the May budget workshop to the council. And then finally, the adopted budget is presented again in the first meeting in June, as I mentioned. And then also part of the budget process that happens currently in February and March are the budget engagement sessions that are held with each commission and board, which you heard earlier tonight, last week, we met with the Public Traffic Safety Commission, and tomorrow we meet with another commission. So shifting gears to give you the budget highlights, this was as of the mid-year budget that was provided in February. We're focusing right here on the general fund, which is the city's primary operating fund. And on this slide, you can see that our revenues are expected to exceed $111 million this year, the bulk of which comes from sales tax. And then on the chart here, the black line reflects revenues, and the blue bars reflect expenditures. And what's notable here is that the revenues exceed the expenditures each and every year, indicating that we are structurally balanced, not only in the current fiscal year, but for the next five years, through our projections. And then you can also see in the black line there that it levels out between fiscal year 22-23 and next fiscal year. And that is anticipation of a potential economic contraction, or really just leveling out of the majority of our revenue sources, which are tied to the local economy. The expenditures of the general fund will total a little over $93 million for this fiscal year, the bulk of which is dedicated towards public safety, with our police and fire contracts noted there. And then public works makes up 20%, and that includes not only the public work staffing, but also several contractual services approved earlier tonight, as an example. And then administrations, 14%, community development, 9%, and then non-departmental is 1%. And then this slide illustrates what the available fund balance is within the general fund. So at the end of the current fiscal year, it's projected to reach $37.1 million. And of that $37.1 million, $18.6 million is dedicated for the reserve for economic uncertainty, and $4.6 million for the secondary reserve. And both of those are reserve levels that are set by budget policy, and we'll discuss that in a little while. But it's important to note that those reserves have never been tapped into throughout the city's history that I'm aware of. And that leaves about $13 million in available fund balance. And one item to note on the chart, so the fund balance is reflected in the blue bars, and then the black line reflects the levels of reserve funding, and then the yellow diamond reflects the desired level of reserve funding. So we are meeting our reserve, our desired level of reserves each year, throughout the five-year forecast, as well as historical. And the drop in fund balance between fiscal years 21-22 and the current fiscal year relates to a recently adopted budget policy related to our debt strategy paydown, which I have a few slides coming up that illustrates where we are on that. And then we have our five-year capital improvement program. Currently, we have 106 separate projects totaling a little over $801 million. Of that, there's $518 million yet to complete, with $283 million already completed. And we break out our capital improvement program into different categories, circulation, infrastructure, parks and rec, and then SARDA, which is also affordable housing. So our total CIP, again, is a little over $801 million. So budget priorities are determined through, or they link to our strategic plan known as the Quality of Life Master Plan. And the QLMP, as you know, was recently updated to include a seventh core value. So we have all seven core values identified throughout the budget document in the form of performance measures and capital projects, all link back to a specific core value. And that is how we ensure that the application of our resources are in line with the city's core values. There are several tools that we utilize when we start to build the operating budget and the capital improvement program budget, the first of which are carryovers from the prior year. So what that includes is any programs or projects that were started in the previous fiscal year that maybe weren't completed. We ensure that the funding for those projects are carried over into the new fiscal year, so that we can bring those projects to completion. Then we do, every so often, we do community satisfaction surveys, and we receive that feedback from the community, and that helps influence what programs and projects are most important to the community. And we're scheduled to do another one next fiscal year to reach out to the community. And then we do the board and commission feedback, as I mentioned before. And then we'll incorporate that feedback into the proposed budget that will come forward to you in May. And then a variety of departments have program and services master plans. So the programs and projects that are identified in those master plans are weaved into either the operating budget or the capital improvement program budget, whichever is most relevant. And then finally, the different city council policies, which we'll review next. So the budget and fiscal policies are part of the annual operating budget, and they are adopted each year in June. There are several policies that impact the development process of the budget, which I'll highlight here. One of which is the fund balance and reserve policy, the Measure S appropriation policy, or priorities, contingency planning, and then the debt or liability paydown strategy. So the fund balance and reserve policy, we have a few charts, or a few slides here that illustrate the different components of fund balance. The fund balance is the accumulation of savings year to year when revenues exceed expenditures. And it's made up of four primary components, the first of which is the reserve for economic uncertainty. And this reflects 20% of the general fund operating expenditures. The secondary reserve represents 5% of the general fund operating expenditures. And then the third category is assigned fund balance. So this is a portion of the fund balance that's committed to future obligations, so capital improvement program projects are the primary example there. And then finally, available fund balance. So that is the uncommitted remaining balance left within the general fund after accounting for those other three categories. So the available general fund balance, or it's also sometimes called the unassigned fund balance. Previous councils have set the appropriation priorities for these funds. It's important to consider that these are one-time funds, so the appropriation priorities reflect that. So the first priority would be to spend any available fund balance on public safety equipment or non-recurring programs. Second would be to deposit the funds into asset management reserves. And asset management reserves are separate funds that are set up somewhat like savings accounts, where it accumulates funds so that when an asset, such as a vehicle or a large piece of equipment, when that reaches the end of its useful life, the funds are there to replace that asset. The third priority is capital improvement projects. The fourth is the reduction of unfunded liabilities related to the CalPERS pension, or OPEB, which stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. And then the fifth is reduction or avoidance of city debt. Measure S, when it was passed in 2016, became effective in 2017, and the council at that time adopted these appropriation guidelines for the spending of Measure S. The first of which is public safety, the second is asset management, and then capital improvement projects, and then finally, community services or general services. And you can see from the pie chart here, the majority of the funding for Measure S is going towards capital projects currently. But when we appropriate Measure S in the budget, we first ensure that public safety is fully funded, and then our asset management, and then capital projects, and then community services. So we follow these appropriation guidelines when we're building the budget document. And then as time goes on, and the cost of public safety and community services increases, that will leave less and less over time for capital projects. We also have a policy for contingency planning, and basically, this lays out the use of our secondary reserve. So when there's a one-time event, such as a state-mandated payment or a natural disaster, we would tap into the secondary reserve first, and fully exhaust that reserve before utilizing the reserve for economic uncertainty. And for ongoing fiscal constraints, so an example of this would be if we lost a major business that was a major sales tax generator. We would utilize a secondary reserve first before using the reserve for economic uncertainty. But there's a limitation, do only use those reserves for a two-year budget cycle. So that would give the city enough time to reduce its... So that would give the city enough time to reduce its expenditures in rea, in reaction to the loss of that revenue item. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the city's never tapped into its reserves, either through the Great Recession or through COVID recently. And the last policy that I'll highlight here is the one that was just adopted in December. And it's our Debt Liability Paydown Strategy. And the goal that was adopted is to have the city become debt-free in a seven-year timeframe. We will do this by utilizing available fund balance in combination with the pension trust balance and any future savings that the payoff of these debts create. And it will become a snowball effect where all the savings will be incorporated into the next year's paydown strategy. And we have four main types of debt. We had a loan on this, on this building here, the Civic Center Loan. A loan on the Margarita Recreation Center that's currently under, under construction. And then we have two unfunded liabilities, one for pension and one for OPEB, which is basically retiree health that was offered many, many years ago to city employees. And you can see the annual outstanding amounts there, as well as the annual payments. And this is what the plan includes as far as the payoff schedule. To date, we have paid off the Civic Center Loan at $12.9 million. We've paid off the MRC Loan at $5 million. And we've put $7.25 million towards our unfunded liability for pension. This is another way to illustrate that. So annual savings, you know, will start around $1.6 million. But by year eight, we will be saving on an annual basis a little over $8 million. And then as the natural attrition of these debts occur, that number will come down. But to date, through the measures that we've done since December, is illustrated by the black line here. And it shows that we, at this point in time, have paid off both loans and a portion of our pension obligations. So we have, by next year, because that'll be a full fiscal year, we will have $3 million in savings on an annual basis. And then next year, the plan is to pay off the OPEB, so that black line will continue to increase and increase as time goes on. There's also some fiscal policy metrics that are included in the budget policies that we would like for, for your input on tonight, whether to keep these at this level, or whether or not you would suggest any changes. So I mentioned our Reserve for Economic Uncertainty. It's currently set at 20% of operating expenditures. Secondary Reserve is set at 5%. Our capital improvement project threshold is $30,000 or greater. And it has to have a long-term lifespan or be non-recurring. And then we have staffing metrics related to police and fire. Our fire staffing metric is four firefighters per engine or truck. Our police staffing, as stated in the general plan, is one officer per 1,000 people. And then we have thresholds related to what qualifies as being an asset to add to the Asset Replacement Fund. And for fleet and equipment, it's any item that is over $10,000 and has at least a three-year lifespan. And for technology equipment, it's anything over $5,000 with a three-year lifespan. And then we have a separate policy that relates to the pension trust contribution. So each year, after we close the books, we are eligible to put in 30% of our general fund operating surplus, limited to $2 million per year. That's currently how the, how the policy reads. And then we have signature delegation authorities in the budget policies as well. The city manager's contract and agreement signing authority currently stands at $100,000, as well as his settlement authority. And then the emergency authority is unlimited, and that waives the public works bidding requirements. And we saw that as the added agenda item tonight. So it's staff recommendation to have the council affirm the city's core values and budget priorities, as well as the budget policies and fiscal policy metrics. Thank you, and I'll be available for any questions you might have.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, I'll go ahead and open it up for questions. Councilmember Alexander, anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilmember Brown? Mayor Pro Tim Stewart?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so could you go back to the slide that has the fire contract cost on there? Because it's, it's very deceptive when they look at that $11 million. It looks like we're paying our fire incredibly cheap. And so I, I'd like to, the public to actually have clarification on that.
Correct. Let me get to that slide. Yes, we, we reflect, let's see, I get there. We reflected the city's cost for that, I think it's this one. Yeah, so fire is shown here at $11.2 million, and that reflects the costs that are charged by the county to the city. The county of Riverside has a structural fire tax credit that is collected through everybody's property tax bills. That money goes to the county, and the county applies the tax credit first and bills us the remainder. So the tax credit in this fiscal year is between $9 and $10 million. So the true overall cost of the fire department is closer to $20 to $21 million. So thank you for, I neglected to clarify that, so thank you for that.
Anything else?
No questions.
Okay, Councilmember Kalfus, anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Fantastic, and thank you again for the presentation. And we all had one-on-ones and subcommittees on that, so we've seen it many, many times, so good stuff. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry, do we have any public comments on this item?
No, we don't have any public comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve.
I would like to have a little discussion first.
Oh, of course.
Yes, okay. So I, for reasons a couple more agenda items away, I think we need to start a, a separate fund for a police station or public safety infrastructure. And so, and while we have these years that, because i, if, if and when we do build a police station, I don't want to have debt. I want to build it for cash. So I want to build a fund now, while we have the money, to, to be able to do that, to be able to say, you know, we've got the $10 million or $15, whatever it takes to build that station. I want to be able to, to have that built up. And, and, because I, I don't want to put any more debt on the city or the citizens. And so I would like to see a, a line item for a, a public safety infrastructure. You know, we own all our fire stations. In fact, the one we don't own, we, we have a separate fund right now. We're building up to buy that when the state makes it available. So we have a very robust fire infrastructure, but we have literally nothing for police, other than the new station that's here in City Hall. So I would like to see a fund for that.
Okay, fair enough. Anyone else in conversation? I'll just add on to that, I, you know, I was thinking about, you know, how these items are a little, they're tied together, obviously. But I do think it's, I appreciate you bringing that forward now, because the earlier we get on that, the easier it is on staff. And, and if we do go down that road, the conversation, and I've been thinking about, you know, some funding sources. And I think, you know, we could look to, you know, SRO share with TVUSD, and maybe that's a funding source for, for something like this, to reinvest back in the city. So, okay, thank you, anything else?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
Did we?
Oh, I don't think we did. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, let us vote. Mine didn't populate. Looks like not everyone's coming up on the screen.
Councilmember Brown, are you in the affirmative?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes 5-0. Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll move to item number 14, is adopt resolution submitting to the voters a ballot measure that proposes to establish term limits for city council members. And may we have a staff report, please, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And we have a slide presentation that we'll go ahead and put up. So we are back two weeks later with the proposed resolution and ordinance. Next slide, please. So as a reminder, the city council gave us direction under Government Code Section 36502B, which actually permits the city council to go ahead and propose by initiative a proposal to limit the number of terms a member of the city council may serve on the city council. And any of these proposals to limit the number of terms, they are applicable prospectively only, and they don't become operative unless the electors of the city at a regularly scheduled election go ahead and pass that. So next slide, please. So again, the four points that we need to be aware of is that the city council, in fact, can propose an initiative. The proposal is not effective until voted upon and passed by the residents by a majority. The proposal must be on a regularly scheduled election, and it is, again, prospectively, not retroactively. Next slide, please. So the city council, on February 14, 2023, went ahead and gave staff direction to, the council did wish to have term limits for city council members. The proposal was to have a term limit of three terms, four years per term for a 12-year total. The council was fine with breaks in, in the service as long as the 12-year total was a lifetime limit. And the council went ahead and proposed placement on the November 2024 ballot. Now, two items that weren't discussed on February 14, 2023 was appointments versus election and partial terms. So the city attorney and I went ahead and included standard language addressing the two items included in the proposed ordinance for city council consideration. Of course, the city council tonight can give us direction otherwise. Next slide, please. Now, what you will see there is on the very last sentence, what we have incorporated is standard language from other cities that address partial terms and appointments versus election. So what we have mentioned is if any person is appointed or elected to a partial term of office of two years or less, that the term shall be, shall not be counted towards the three-term limit. So in other words, if you have occupied the seat for two years or less, regardless of whether it is an appointment, or regardless of whether it is an election, it will not count towards the term limits. And again, that is pretty standard language. Next slide, please. So for next steps, what we will be asking is that the city council go ahead and adopt the proposed resolution regarding term limits. We will go ahead and notify the Riverside, Riverside County Registrar of Voters that we will have a local ballot measure on the November 2024 ballot. We will, in the summer of 2024, when we consolidate our general municipal election, we will also consolidate the local ballot measure election at that time. The term limit measure will be voted upon by the residents of Temecula in November 2024. And if a majority of the voters pass it, the measure will go into effect 10 days after the city council declares the results of the November 5, 2024 election. Typically, that's after a 30-day canvas period. So it's at that first meeting in December where we declare our results, and then it would be effective 10 days after. So that concludes staff's presentation, and we're happy to ask any, answer any questions or take any further direction that you would like.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff from city council?
I have one question, it just popped up. Actually, I know we had a good discussion about this earlier. I guess my question is, since a term limit is, I guess, two years and above, right? What if somebody was to do, let's say, six months or a year? How many times can they do that? So if we have somebody that comes in, for instance, let's say they get appointed for a year, and then let's say maybe, God forbid, the next time they get sick or something happens, do we also want to put a limit on how many times they can come back within that shorter amount of time of the two years? Does that make sense?
It does. We, that seems like a very rare occurrence. So far in the city's history, we've pretty much just had a vacancy occurs because a council member is appointed to higher office, or there might be a resignation of sorts. We haven't had the experience, nor am I aware of cities that routinely have an experience with multiple appointments of the same person. If the council would like to give us direction on that, we're happy to take it.
And that's the thing, I've never heard of that. I'm just saying, like, the, oh, there you go. Like, the what-if? And so what if we just put it in there and just say, okay, this is, maybe you can do one of those, and, or whatever we decide?
I, I don't, I don't see the, the need.
Okay, and we don't have to, I just thought of it. I was like, I just want to make sure we're covering all bases.
Especially if you've got a really qualified candidate, like a Gene Wonderlick, to be able to come in and fill that gap until the next election cycle, why not keep using him? I mean, or her.
No, I'm saying, like, so for instance, and maybe I'm just not explaining myself, right? So let's say I get appointed for a year.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I come back in and I, I get elected because I, I was, I did that great of a job. And then I get sick. And then, so I, like, I have to take myself off the dais because of whatever illness, or whatever that may be.
Right.
And then I want to run again. Like, how, is, are we, are we okay with that, to let them continue to run? And if we are, it's fine, I just want to, just to take a look at that, so, okay.
I don't see any reason.
Let's say, keep running.
All right, then, just keep running. I just want to make sure that we're covering all bases, so.
I mean, we can't cover, obviously, every situation that ever comes out. But if it's less than two years and that's what we decide on, I think that's totally fine.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Okay, if not, are there any public comments on this item?
There are no public comments on this item. We did have public comments that were incorporated on this item from previous comments.
Sure, okay, all right. We'll go ahead and entertain a motion in a second.
I have a motion.
Second.
Okay, let us vote.
Councilmember Brown, it's not working. Is it in the affirmative?
Affirmative.
Okay, that passes 5-0. Thank you, everybody. All right, moving on to our departmental reports. These are all received and filed. We'll move to our items for future agendas. Item number one is consider creation of ad hoc subcommittee to discuss Temecula Police Department at the request of Mayor Pro Tim Stewart. Mr. Stewart, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, we have several public comments on all of these. And we do have a total limit of 15 minutes. So can we go ahead and hear just from all four speakers at this point that are in person, if that is the mayor's will?
Yeah, that seems reasonable.
Okay. So at this point, I will go ahead, and again, all the speakers have three minutes each. So we'll have Laurel Lamott to be followed by Brianna Mason.
Hi, so I'm just here to encourage a vote for yes to place Affordable Housing Rent Control on the agenda going forward. I don't see us taking any extreme action to help renters right now. Obviously, I show up for attainable homeownership often in all things housing. We're drowning out here, and there's no sense of urgency. And I know city staff is designed to advise you because you can't know everything. If you need to borrow some housing books, I have plenty I can lend out. But you can't know everything, so you have to rely on city staff. Please do not take it to a subcommittee. Please do not let it go to a subcommittee to sit for a year. We need, renters need action now. We need, we're long out before ever owning a home here, if ever going to be able to own a home here. And there's no home security in rent. There's no home security in it. We've created the access to the lesser-earning workforce and the employment we've not built for those employees. We need some housing security. Housing security is, exists in Affordable Housing Rent Control. That's a start. Let's please put it on the agenda. Let's not push it to a subcommittee. Your staff is not recognizing. Aaron Adams told me in an email when the concerts happened that, you know, where I live was a choice. It's not a choice. We have an affordable overlay zone for a reason. We don't have equitable housing within your pretty pre-planned communities. I've said it before, I'm saying it again. We're not included. We've been excluded. We weren't incorporated in the design. Let's talk about the start. Let's give us housing security, let's put it on the agenda. And then let's start talking about attainable homeownership and equitable opportunities in existence of housing and homeownership. That's my public comment, thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
The next speaker is Brianna Mason.
Welcome.
Hello. I'm going to introduce myself as a person to you before I make a demand. I'm a longtime resident of Temecula. I'm also a resident in the Old Town Temecula Affordable Housing. I'm a single mother to a disabled child. I'm a caregiver to my 88-year-old grandmother. I'm in social work. I've actually served for Child Protective Services here for seven years in Temecula. If you've had children or grandchildren in the school zone, I've probably serviced their classmates, helped their parents to get over obstacles, mental health issues, substance abuse. Currently, I work under a grant for the Office of Victims of Crime, so I'm helping our community members who are victims of various crimes, domestic violence, things like that. I want to empower members of our community, and I need to start with myself. I'm very nervous right now, so I apologize, but I need to start with myself. No one gets into social work for the money. We all know that. I'm not rich in money, but I am rich in how I care for others and how I care for my community. My special needs son and I currently live in a roughly 500-square-foot, one-bedroom apartment, and we soon may not be able to afford even living there. I represent a social class who is taking care of our children, but also taking care of our parents and our grandparents, excuse me. And we are doing the best we can with an economy that is working against us. It is no longer good for us to even go to college. What is the point? We come out with student debt, and then we can't even afford a home in the community we've grown up in. So I'm asking that you add rent control and affordable housing, please, we're begging you. We are not here with our hands out asking for anything. We are just asking to be able to live here, and we are not in a social class right now. We are too rich for assistance, but we are too for, poor to afford a home here, to rent here. Please help us, please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Brian Nash, to be followed by Daniel Kit.
Welcome.
How's it going? I'm not going to top that. Thank you for being so honest about all of this. Jessica, you said a few minutes ago, it's nice that the police have somewhere close to home, that they can spend, you know, between work and home, in regard to the police station. That's what these guys are asking for as well. So let's talk rent control. I've got an MBA from a top school. I've spent my career in financial services. I understand investments as well as anybody in this room. I get why rent control feels like something that's challenging, something to bury in a subcommittee, something to do away with as quickly and quietly as possible. But investment sometimes takes form in ways we might not necessarily consider. By imposing rent controls, you invest in our communities. You invest in our small businesses, hell, even in the mega corporations that make up a lot of this area, simply by helping to provide a ready and willing workforce proximal to the people that they serve. We already see the downsides of a lack of rent control. You literally just saw it. People are traveling from all over the place to work jobs that can't cover their bills. While there's some that may happily boast about driving from God knows where in California to, for a job, who does that now? The math just sometimes doesn't work. So what happens? Workers drop out of the labor force, and we all feel it. This means it takes longer for any of us to get anything done. How much productivity are each of us losing every single week waiting just a simple extra couple of minutes a day at Starbucks or wherever? As the man who took the man with the yellow hat on his spirit quest in Curious George, a very monkey Christmas said, "It's about time." Time is an investment none of us think too much about, but it's super important. More time means more gets done, which is good for all of us. It's good for Temecula. Let's also talk briefly about Temecula's young people. We're aware of the brain drain that happens after kids graduate from high school around here, or maybe even a couple of years of tuition-free college. Wouldn't it be rad if we actually attracted them to stay and build businesses or careers locally, something that we have failed miserably at forever? And all it takes is actually making the area remotely affordable. But again, I know investing. I know what people want to see, so here you go. Rent control can mean $5,200 per year, per person, per commuter. Imagine what the people could do with that. Think of the benefits to, say, Old Town Temecula's restaurants. The economic benefit is undeniable if you wish to look beyond a handful of wealthy investors. So before we bury rent control in some nebulous committee, I think it's important that we actually consider the trade-off that a lack of rent control actually has on the growth of Temecula. I believe it's worth serious consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our last in-person speaker is Daniel Kit.
Welcome.
Good evening, city council members, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and city staff. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with you this evening regarding the formation of the ad hoc committee to form a standalone fire department. My name is Daniel Kit, and I am one of the deputy district vice presidents representing Cal Fire, IFF Local 2881 in the Riverside District. In my day job, as we call it, I'm an engineer paramedic assigned to our county hazardous materials team in Winchester. I wanted to take this opportunity to speak on the behalf of the 50-plus Local 2881 members we represent in the Temecula City contract. Cal Fire, Riverside County Fire, and Local 2881 have enjoyed a positive, prosperous relationship with the city of Temecula for decades. The Temecula contract is our flagship Schedule A contract in this unit and in the state. In 2000, at the direction of the city council, working with Cal Fire Local 2881 and Cal Fire Management, Temecula is one of the first cities in Riverside County to add paramedics for the protection of its residents. In 2005, Riverside County, the city council approved and was the first contract in Cal Fire Riverside County Fire to have industry-standard 4O ALS municipal staffing on all city fire engines. This brought the city in line with industry-standard 4O ALS municipal staffing on all city fire engines. All this was achieved through the local control that the city council has. Cooperative fire protection is the biggest benefit of contracting with Cal Fire Riverside County Fire. At any given time, 24 hours a day, Temecula is able to call on any of Cal Fire Riverside County Fire's 82 advanced life support paramedic engine companies, eight trunk, eight truck companies, six urban search and rescue task forces, a full-time-staffed OES Type 1 hazmat team, over a dozen wildland fire engines, and the largest aerial firefighting fleet in the world, including tankers and helicopters, heavy equipment such as dozers, and potentially dozens of firefighting hand crews. All of this is thanks to your, the city council's dedication to the citizens of Temecula and the professional firefighters sworn to protect them. In addition to all the services above, the five fire stations serving the city of Temecula are an integrated part of this community. Whether it be dinner with a firefighter, fire station tours, high school career expos, or the Fire Explorer Program for youths interested in pursuing a career in the fire service, the members of the Cal Fire Riverside County Fire and Local 2881 are 100% committed to the citizens of Temecula. Our Local 2881 professional firefighters are some of the best in the world, and I would put them up against any fire department any day. In closing, I would like to again thank you for your time and for letting me speak to you this evening. The Temecula City Council has time and time again shown its commitment to public safety and its dedication to Cal Fire Riverside County Fire, and we look forward to that continued relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, are there any more speakers?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any other in-person speakers. I will say I have a number of email comments, so the emails received from Mark Garcia in regards to the fire item, and the emails received from Sarah Payton, Tammy Meyer, Lauren Cornier, Martha Howard, Jennifer Cornelius, Lana Salier, and Melissa Burbanez regarding the affordable housing rent control measure, they will all be put into the record.
Okay, appreciate that. Okay, we'll now move into item number one, which is consider creation of ad hoc subcommittee to discuss Temecula Police Department at the request of Mayor Pro Tim Stewart. You now have the floor.
Okay, so basically, I had a great meeting with Sheriff Bianco on this issue, and a couple of things came out of it. He clarified that our officers do not have to leave Temecula if they promote, which is, was a big sticky point for me. I, I, I understand that was a policy of the previous sheriff, and so I didn't realize that the current sheriff does not have that policy in place. So that was a huge thing for me. Also, he expressed he totally supports the idea of us having our own police station in, in Temecula. And he's, he's got, he just built a police station in Arupa Valley, so that was very encouraging to hear that cost. And that's why I wanted to put it in our, our budget thought of a, a police station within the city of Temecula. So I'm, I'm literally withdrawing the idea of starting our own PD, but I want to push forward the idea of bringing our sheriff's officers inside our city limits. I, I feel that's something that we need to do as a city to show our dedication to public safety. And, and instead of having a commuter police force, we'll have a police force that actually exists within the city of, of Temecula. So that's, that's where I'm going with that, as far as I'm concerned. I've talked to San Diego PD lieutenant, and he was talking about the incredible time that they're having with attrition down in San Diego, that they have literally, even if they filled their academy up and every single guy passed, they would still go negative every year, as far as how many officers are terming out, you know, injury. So I don't want the city to be in that kind of a situation. So that's, that's something I'm, I'm thinking, I don't want to, I don't want to go down that route, because recruitment is going to be a lot harder than first anticipated. And that was something Sheriff Bianco pointed out, and I was able to verify with several other agencies. So there's, it's just a huge struggle right now to get anybody to want to do policing work. So, so I'm in favor of keeping our sheriffs, but keeping them inside our city limits by building a police station, creating ownership, creating just a better sense of public appreciation and/or ownership. So that's where I, so I'm literally going to remove the idea of creating our own PD, but I want to kind of shift into the police station model.
Okay. So is that a wholesale removal of this?
Yes.
Or do you want to modify it to anything? Are you good with the current public safety subcommittee we have handling this?
I mean, I, I don't think I'm on it, but I would, I would want, I think, a separate subcommittee. City manager, what would you say about this?
Yeah, we have a, we have a dedicated, and this, this probably will be in conflict with what you just said, but we have a dedicated ad hoc subcommittee.
Is it the surplus lands?
It's Public Safety Ad hoc, and in reading the description, "The subcommittee will work with staff to evaluate and discuss the city's public safety operations, opportunities, inefficiencies, and other related matters. This includes evaluating alternatives to the police base of operations located at Southwest Station." And I, I think, Mayor Pro Tim, that's what you're, you're asking for. You're correct, you're not currently listed on that. Council members Alexander and Kalfis are assigned to that subcommittee, so I think that would be something the council needs to discuss. I don't know that you need to solve that at this moment, but if this becomes an agenda item in two weeks, that's something that you're going to need to think about if we want to assign something completely different, or if, Stu, you want to replace somebody on that ad hoc subcommittee, that's also available to the subcommittee. But we're going to be looking for council direction if this goes forward.
So, so do I have to bring it back again, or can we take it from here and put it right on the agenda?
My recommendation, barring Peter telling me we can't do this, this is more you, Mayor Pro Tim, clarifying your future agenda item.
Right.
Not the actual agenda item itself. So I'm comfortable, as long as you're clarifying for your colleagues' benefit what it is that they're voting on this evening, what it is they're not voting on this evening, and then voting up or down if you want to see this come back in two weeks. I'm comfortable.
In clarification, what we would, we would be voting on is bringing this back as only a discussion on a police station model versus a stand-up PD.
Okay. And, and, and let's just assume, let's play this out, that this gets approved and it gets on the agenda. We can have the discussion about, is this appropriate for this current subcommittee? And if we'd like to make changes, we could do so at that time, right? So we don't necessarily have to create anything new, we don't, you know, we already have the, the infrastructure in place. So, okay, I think we're good, but I want to open it up to any questions of the balance of the council, if anyone's unsure.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, I, I do, you had mentioned earlier in the meeting, and I, I think it can't get lost in this conversation, as it, as you're voting and you want to bring stuff back, it's a little confusing, but I think the Mayor Pro Tim has kind of like a two, really two things that, that are connect, interconnected. One is the ad hoc and the discussion on the police station, and then there's a correlating financial policy, city council policy related to that action. I would envision both of those being part of any future staff report for this council's discussion and direction.
Does that make sense?
It does, and it would have to be.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, for clarifying purposes, your motion that you would be voting up or down is whether or not to consider the creation of an ad hoc subcommittee to discuss the Temecula Sheriff's Station and any related funding mechanisms. Would you like to see that on a future agenda?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll entertain, so we have a motion.
I will motion.
I'll second it, and let's vote.
Councilmember Brown, are you in the affirmative?
Affirmative. Thank you.
Okay, and that passes 5-0, and we'll see that in two weeks. Okay, item number two is consider creation of ad hoc subcommittee to discuss Temecula Fire Department at the request of Councilmember Kalfis. You have the floor.
So when I initially proposed this about a month or so ago, my initial thought was working alongside Cal Fire on strike teams and different assignments, I always thought that Cal Fire deserved more. And when I mean by deserve more, I mean, I believe that they deserve more pay and they deserve more time off. Cal Fire compared to a lot of municipal departments, work more, and they aren't compensated for the work that they do. So when I proposed this, my initial thought was, that's what I wanted for Cal Fire, and that's what I wanted for our firefighters here in the city of Temecula. But after doing my own research and my own due diligence, I realized that that is something that necessarily, that's above Temecula City Council's realm of authority. And I've come to the, my own conclusion that Cal Fire, and more specifically Riverside County Fire, provides the best fire and emergency services to the residents of Temecula. And therefore, I will not be moving forward with my request for a subcommittee for Temecula Fire Department.
Okay, thank you very much, noted. Okay, item number three, consider rent control ordinance for affordable housing at the request of Councilmember Stewart. You have the floor.
All right, so this is really something that I just wanted to daylight, and I, I'm, I really want to ask our city manager to come back and give a report on what rent controls and what does affordable housing look like in Temecula? From, from our investment, you know, because we, we have invested a lot of money in, in the city of Temecula, in affordable housing. And so, and what do the covenants look like on the actual managers of the buildings and the, the property owners? And so I, for me, it was more just to clarify what is in place right now. So, because you can't talk about something if you don't- what is in place right now. So, because you can't talk about something if you don't know the answer. And that's, and that's what I feel like, you know, the discussion was going on is, you know, Ms. Lamont wants something, and I need to know what, and I need the public to know what we can and what we can't do. And so I, I'm just asking us to have our city manager, or whoever he assigns, to come back and explain how the covenants on the affordable housing, and, and what's in the pipeline. What do we have? What, how are we affecting this community who, who basically feels faceless? How are we addressing their needs at a city level? Because I know we're doing a lot, but I don't think the public knows we're doing a lot. So I, I would like to have that report, just to daylight all the information, just so when, you know, when we talk about rent control, we're going to find out we already have it. But I want that to come from the city manager, talking about exactly what, what we have in place already. And so that's what I'm asking the council to take this a little farther.
All right. I'll open up for any quick questions from balance of the council. So I'm not seeing any. So instead, you're asking, you know, not for a rent control ordinance, but a presentation on
That's what I'm asking.
Affordable housing.
Correct.
Okay. I mean, that seems reasonable.
Yeah.
And I know we've done them at past meetings, and I know even Reddy Commission has seen them as well. But it's definitely something that it wears on your heart when you hear these stories. And, and I think it's important that we communicate that back to the community. So I would certainly support that, and I guess.
I'll make the motion.
You have a motion, so a motion to consider
So actually, Mr. Mayor, you don't need to have a motion on that, from what I heard from Mayor Protem Schwenk, Stewart, is that he is pulling that item and instead directing the city manager to go ahead and bring back a presentation.
Okay. That's even a cleaner process. Okay.
That's why my machine doesn't work.
Since your, since your voting isn't working. Okay, and last item is, item four is, consider the process for placement of future agenda items at the request of myself. So, you know, when I first came onto council, you know, there was this, this feeling of you would have to communicate with your colleagues, right? I remember, you know, sitting, you know, for the first, first few meetings and sort of understanding the dynamics of what it's like to work with a team, and, and if there were some things that I wanted to bring forward, and, and I would, I would reach out to another council member and, and say, hey, I've got this idea, you know, would you mind co-sponsoring this with me and bringing that forward? And that worked, you know? I think that was sort of historically the unwritten rules. And we, we, we had to come into an age as a city and create policy. And I think it's important that we did create the policy. But I, but I see some problems with it, and I think if we could have this discussion at the council level, we could address some of them, you know, and, and just really, not to go too deep into this, but, you know, oftentimes, we can start with our city manager, like, that's an important relationship that we have, so we should work with that. We do have many subcommittees, and we heard the nefarious, you know, send it to a subcommittee thing, and, and I see the exact opposite of that. We can spend valuable time looking at things through the subcommittee. There's various other avenues for bringing items to, to, to an agenda. The most important is trying to build consensus, right? And, and obviously not building consensus with everyone, but if I want to bring something forward, I want to have a conversation with at least one other colleague and say, hey, you know, what do you think about this? You know, am I in the right lane? And you might say, yeah, that's wackadoodle, stop. Or you might be like, okay, that's, that's normal. So that's really the conversation I want to have about this. We're having folks come to the podium and say, I want you to do this. I want you to put an item on. And we're sort of reacting to that. We're spending a lot of time on these future agenda items, and we have an infrastructure in place to handle a bulk of this, these asks. So I would just ask that we place this on a future agenda item. We can have the discussion and tighten up our council policy at a future meeting. So with that, that's my motion. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Let us vote.
Affirmative.
All right, we have a one, and let's see. Okay, and that passes 5-0. Okay, thank you, everyone. City managers, report?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just have a, kind of want to do a quick commercial here. We don't often talk about a business incubator. The city of Temecula has a business incubator. It's located over on the west side. It's doing amazing things, and some, we, we refer to it as TVE2, the Temecula Valley Entrepreneur Exchange. So I'm just going to do a quick little commercial for those that aren't familiar with what goes on there. You can see on this slide here, just like Shark Tank, we do quick pitch competitions where we coach folks that are courting investment into a idea, entrepreneurial spirit. You can see there's an in-person event there on April 12th from 11:30 to 1:00. Next slide, please. We also cater to veterans, and I know this is very important. And so you can see there, there's a list of sessions supporting our veteran population in starting a business, understanding your market, economics, financing your venture, a number of classes and opportunities. Next slide, please. Here's another list of just some random programs that we picked that are coming up in the next couple of weeks, marketing, campaign strategy. These are, this is free advice. This is free business advice taught by legitimate business owners that know their, their stuff. How to do business with the city of Temecula, if you're interested. How to become one of our valued contractors. And so attend a session on March 16th. Next slide. And lastly, here's some other practical programs that are being offered later in March, whether it's OSHA certification or employment law. Just a lot of really great programs. Mary is our incubator manager over there. She's doing a great job. I know I send all the updates to the city council, but for the general public and for our business community, it is a hidden gem that is sometimes forgotten, that it's available and out there. So with that, I appreciate the opportunity to share that this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. Mr. City Attorney, anything this evening?
I have nothing further.
Oh, gosh darn it. I was looking forward to hearing you talk for a little bit.
I, I do have a long list of topics I could
Okay.
No.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and move to our adjournment. If we could put up a quick slide. This is Ted Hoffman. He is the Mayor Protem of the city of Norco. And sadly, Ted passed in his sleep just a few days ago. We, we've served, many of us have served with Ted over the years, and he is a gem. He was a gem. He was obviously a valued regional leader. The time I served with him on RTA, he always had poignant questions and very thoughtful comments, and he always did what he thought was best for Norco and the citizens of Riverside County. So with that, we will be adjourning our meeting this evening in memory of Ted Hoffman. May he rest in peace, Ted. We are adjourned.